The meeting of the City of Socorro, Texas is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence off all comments or questions. No disruptive behavior or actions will be tolerated and violated or subject to rejection and possible prosecution. Does anybody need to do this statement? Laura Spano?
Yes.
Yes. The Spano?
Yes.
Yes. The council of the city of Socorro has asked for a [inaudible 00:01:34]. Caballeros, please take off your shirts, sombreros, and all, please, put in silence all kinds of equipment. No disruptive behavior or actions will be tolerated and violated or subject to rejection and possible prosecution. Does anybody need to do this statement? Laura Spano?
Yes.
Yes. The Spano?
Yes.
Yes.
Six oh one, meeting on order. This is the only decision of the [inaudible 00:01:59]. I would like to leave this to the [inaudible 00:02:02] of the United States of America. Intuitively [inaudible 00:02:05] of which spans one nation under [inaudible 00:02:08]. In the basis with liberty, yes, for all.
Establishment of form.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Here.
Maria Reyes?
Here.
Joseph Pauling?
Here.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum?
Public time?
We have most papers.
Moving on to the agenda. A second?
I second.
Motion a second.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Here.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Here.
And Gloria Rodriguez.
I'm in, yes.
Do we need James here?
Maybe not here.
Does anybody want to stand?
Any one of you want to?
Oh, in the middle. So moving on to the agenda. Can we go ahead and do fifteen first? We can go ahead and not let the middle of the rest of the week. Go ahead and do it now, move it before item number ten.
Motion to move item number fifteen after nine.
For a second?
A second.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Here.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item fifteen, swearing in a commissioner.
Aye. Aye. Evening. Carros de Pulvera, two south of this way, two south of this way. Or a firm? Or a firm that I have not correctly?
I have not correct.
Or incorrectly?
Or incorrectly.
Pay?
Pay.
Offer?
Offer.
Promised to pay?
Promised to pay.
Contributed?
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute?
Or promised to contribute.
Any money?
Any money.
Or anything valuable?
Anything valuable.
Or promise any public?
Promise any public.
Or employment?
Or employment.
As your word secure?
As your word secure.
My appointment?
My appointment.
Or confirmation there are?
Or confirmation there are.
Aye. Aye. Carros de Pulvera?
Two south of this way.
Two south of this way. Or a firm?
Or a firm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of the park commission?
Of the park commission.
Of the City of Socorro, Texas?
The City of Socorro, Texas.
And move to the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend the Constitution?
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
Okay. Moving on to item number ten. Introduction, first reading and conference by public hearing of ordinance three two zero amendment number one. An ordinance of the City of Socorro establishing procedures and rules for city council meetings and agendas as provided by section three point zero eight of the Socorro City Charter and establishing procedures and rules for conduct of the Socorro City Council and all of the City's Socorro boards and commissions and requiring ordinance number three zero four amendment number one and order two eight zero amendment number one. After your motion?
Motion approved.
Do a second motion.
Motion will dial open?
The man in the corner.
And second, please.
Well, I just motion. Need a session of the [inaudible 00:03:55]?
I don't know. We just need to. Some change in the [inaudible 00:04:03].
Anybody else?
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item approved.
Item number eleven, discussion and action on master plan by site southwest.
I make a motion to postpone the election. The reason being is because we don't know the outcome and we want, you know, the new council to take a look at it because this, they might have different views, different opinions.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree with that. We came in and then we had the chance to review it and I don't think it'd be fair because whoever comes in council, whether we keep the same council for the most part or whether new faces come in, the thing is, you know, it's the right to look at it first. We're going to be together hopefully for the next three years with that consequence in November, so it's, it's only fair that they get to have to review it and make any changes, recommendations that they do with this.
Second.
Sure, a second. Anybody else?
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez? Item approved.
Item number twelve, discussion and action on providing music entertainment for fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen for senior dances at Rio Vista Community Center, waiving event permits and with a budget not to exceed two thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
For a second? Go ahead.
On this, is she here?
Yes. So basically, this money would come out of the [inaudible 00:05:12] allocated for Carson Rettie. So it's not spending extra money that hasn't been already set aside for that.
Which is just, so senior dances, is this, did you already get an estimate of how much it would cost per event?
Yes, each five hundred dollars per, per event, per dance.
So we would have four around the year.
Make a motion to approve?
Sorry, I approved it.
Oh, maybe we'll take it.
Third. Second. All right, anybody else on this? Motion a second?
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez? Item approved.
Item thirteen, discussion and action for proposed fall festival on October thirty first, twenty thirteen at Rio Vista Community Center, waiving event permit and with budget not to exceed eight thousand dollars.
Do you have an argument statement on that? What cost will be for?
For this one, we're basically, we got together and we decided to have an event for Halloween. So they've been reaching out to people, seeing what the possible people, we didn't want to say anything, so we thought we would prove we have. The budget won't exceed eight thousand. So what we're going to have basically is a movie night. What we got at Rio Vista, we're going to show the nine before Christmas. We're going to have Halloween, nine before Christmas.
Okay.
And then we're going to have custom contests, we're going to have jumping to the kids and whatnot, so.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
All right, any other questions on this?
Yes, the only thing is a fall festival, what?
Halloween.
It's Halloween.
A lot of people.
Yeah, they, some people won't understand what the fall festival is, especially in my area.
Fall slash Halloween?
Yeah, so that people will know. And that's it.
Scary fall festival. And I know that we all like to, you know, it's Christmas, Halloween, but I do think that, you know, it has to be fall, so nobody gets.
Defended by the [inaudible 00:06:56].
That's my recommendation.
Yeah. And then we, and a lot of people don't like Merry Christmas, we got Happy Holidays. We follow that change, Jen.
What do you mean, Jen? I'm, I'm in favor of fall festival. We're good then. So we have, we have a motion a second.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez? Item approved.
Yes.
Item fourteen, discussion and action on approving traffic stabilization for districts one, two, and three. So on this one, I, I do have a question, because I consider more than anything. Is that, I know we tabled this a while back, but I don't see this report included, do we? Would overexpectation, it's not included?
No.
They have it on district. Then we know that we had said for the city by project, but then I feel that if we're going to approve it now, we should also include Mr. Pauling's district as well.
Yeah, Mr. Pauling's district is, was approved the day before yesterday for planning and zoning commission. And in will be presented on the next caption.
Not tabled to be presented?
Yeah, just present all of them today.
Yeah, and that makes more sense, that way we can see all of them, all that ones that are approved and assigned now and some that's basically [inaudible 00:07:56].
When this is such a motion, say less than, like, for less than reasons?
I make a motion to table to let, let through. You know?
Do we have a second?
I second.
I'm ready. All right, we have a motion, second. Is there a safe discussion?
Yes.
I believe that this stabilization project has been tabled and delayed too long. And it's not a good idea. So if we can just add this district form right now and decide, save some time, it would be best.
Well, would this one mean it was tabled because of the fact that originally it was only for your district, so we felt that it was better to be citywide? So if it was tabled, it was tabled because we wanted it to become better for the whole city. [inaudible 00:08:00].
And, and it goes back to the same thing, the mayor said. He just started on George District and wanted it in all districts. So we're missing District Four. So I don't want to approve something and exclude one or the other. So I want it, when it gets presented from all the districts, so that I can feel better to say, you know what, I'm not going to exclude District Four or District One or District Two. I want it to be straight, everybody's going to get equal and that's the way it should be. So not until I get presented with all districts, then I feel comfortable voting for it. So in fact, Skywood?
Okay, I'm not saying to exclude this form, I'm saying to include it right now to save time. And then, you know, the reason, the reason that it was my district first was because I had been working with it for a long, long time, the people in my area had been waiting for this project for a long time. And it wasn't because I didn't want to be angry, I, I believe I put an item on the agenda years back to do this citywide, not just in my district, but I did work for my district and it was written first. So the people in my district are waiting for that for a long, long time. I'm not saying exclude District Four, I'm saying include it now, so we will save time. That's all I'm saying.
All right. The people in my district have been complaining also since I can remember, but I have talked to them and I could kind of leave them down. They already said that they had it, they had it none of the day, so therefore, if you could get out of the [inaudible 00:10:06] except by, like I did, I think the rating will be fine because we can get all that we can get.
Mayor?
Okay.
The District Form four cannot be decided right now because the information has been recently approved by, by Planning Zone Commission. So we don't have the formal recommendation content up to this point.
So I mean, that's pretty much it, if you, if you just want to say no, can't, now, let's go ahead and just wait for next week. Go ahead. Last one.
Sure, in the meantime, you know, we can start with one, two, and three, if this one four cannot include it right now, it saves time. That's all I'm saying. Because people in the district have waited for this for a long time. And the next one doesn't happen.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
That's to table, correct?
Yes, yes. Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
No.
Motion approved?
Yes, item sixteen, discussion and action on relocating the code enforcement duties to the planning zone department.
Comment? If we tabled this item fourteen, it will come back automatically with just one, two, and three. I think that the most appropriate function would be to delete and bring back the, the item with the four districts.
Mr. Martin?
You can either table it and add a separate agenda for those.
Right. Just add a separate to the item. Just for, great, okay. So that's fine. Okay, so sixteen.
Discussion updated.
Do you have anything on this?
Uh, sixteen.
Mayor, do you want to be getting to the record?
I already have.
No.
Discussion action on relocating the code enforcement duties to the planning zone department.
Mayor, council, this is the legislation of planning commission to transfer back the code enforcement duties to the planning department. Transferring the code enforcement activities back to planning zone department represents several benefits to the City of Socorro. One, in order to provide more, a more complete follow-up to the different code val, code violations throughout, throughout the city, it is important to have a hundred percent code enforcement officer exclusively dedicated to those activities, which will consequently benefit the police for not distracting its personnel or police duty. Number two, the economic benefit of having civilian code enforcers instead of police officers is significant due to the difference in salary re, salary rates. Number three, the codes to enforce are mostly related to zone construction, historical regulations, businesses, property maintenance, etc. Those regulations are completely administered by the planning zone department, being easy for this department to identify the violation and follow out the corrections. Recommendation, the planning zone commission recommends to approve transferring the code enforcement duties from police department to planning zone department utilizing for these tasks qualified civilian code enforcers by also requesting assistance from the police department on complaints of possible violations after regular hours and during the weekends. The transfer, if approved by council, will be performed once the hiring procedures, procedure started. This is, I think we have a, a different benefits of getting back the code enforcement officers to the planning department. In addition to the economical benefit.
On this one, it wouldn't affect the organizational charge since currently in the police department, we transfer more to the planning zone, so we need an amendment to the organizational charge before we can approve it, or does that have to be approved now?
Subsequent, we're axing about the ideal, in order for it to happen, you would literally have to change the organizational charge, which requires public hearing for that purpose.
Would it not also add the two civilians that are going to be going to the planning zone?
Yes.
And find those as well?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, there is a couple of different things to happen with this. Number one, the two code enforcers that are in the police department literally would remain in the police department and become patrol officers, whereas two civilians will be hired in the planning department for code enforcement. One police officer that's now the evidence, property evidence officer will become a civilian job and that position will move back into patrol. And the other thing is, is that a request will be made to be, to hire one additional police officer. The net effect of that change would be four police officers now in patrol as opposed to what we have currently and then authorizations for hiring two individuals in code enforcement.
Wouldn't we also need to have a budget amendment to increase the budget?
Yes, you would. You would need a budget amendment for one police officer and two code enforcement officers. And obviously, the civilian position of property evidence personnel.
Correct. Lieutenant, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Any more questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Until you're there. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion a second, any further discussion, [inaudible 00:11:00].
No, I think it's a good idea. I always said that we were being understaffed in our police department, so this will, you know, help out our constituents. And also, you know, we can hire two more code enforcers. I think it's, it's a, it'll benefit our citizens in a long way.
Anybody else?
The two persons that are there now are the code enforcement police department? They're going to be back in, in full police.
They'll all lose their commission, right? They go back to them.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item approved?
Thank you.
Item seventeen, discussion and action on payment approval to provide an auto service in the amount of one thousand ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents with a half a lift back purchase order. Mayor, council?
We needed to fix three public, planning zone trusts. And sometimes when you made a, a car for, for repair, you don't know how many little details might be, you know, coming out. And it was difficult for us to, to get a cost estimate preliminary.
You don't have a copy of the invoice?
It's for one thousand ninety-eight dollars.
Well, you can post it from.
Yes.
Questions?
Yes. I don't mind.
Do you all want to approve it now or you want to wait until?
No, we'll, we'll go ahead and approve it. I mean, it's, it's up to the fact and, and it needs to be repaired. I mean, it's, that's a cost of actually.
Work, work. Other?
So, go ahead and.
Can you make a motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, now motion a second. Any further discussion, [inaudible 00:11:55]?
No, no, it's, it's all good.
All right, anybody else on this?
I think I didn't explain it well the last time, but she did say that sometimes it's delayed and, like you said, if, you know, things come up that delay actually the, the work, that the work has to be done. That's fine.
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez? Item approved?
Item eighteen, discussion and action on payment approval to content engineering in the amount of two thousand twelve dollars and fifty cents with a half a lift back purchase order.
Mayor, this is a situation also where the City of Socorro hired an engineer firm in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars to create the, the engineering surveying, is actually not physical survey, but a means and ground survey to create the annexation master plan. They complied with, with the initial, the original scope of work. After the, after they complied with, with a hundred percent, city council members, they were requesting additional adjustments, changes, modifications that forced them to, to perform additional professional services. And this is a, a remaining act.
Make questions?
No, make a motion to approve. It's understandable, you know, once you ask for something additional that you agree upon, you know. It's reasonable.
Any further comments? Motion a second?
Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item approved?
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to content services of ASA architects to be able to develop a residential construction plan for a single-family housing at a cost of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. With this one, Mr. Laguia, I talked to him and he said to go ahead and just delete it, it already is done.
Okay.
Motion approved.
I second.
Motion a second, any special on this?
No. Mary Garcia is absent. Renee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Joseph Pauling?
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Item deleted?
Item, discussion and action regarding the annexation of certain land, including authorizing city staff and city attorney to perform an analysis of the procedural options available to annex plan and the costs and benefits of each. Review past annexation efforts, assess or develop municipal service inventory, municipal service plan, and annexation plan, and to contract for workers to procure land, surveys, power reports, and other materials necessary for annexation. That was a very long sentence. Sir? It's like Taylor, two, two, these sentences long.
Mr. Mayor, council, I, I placed aside on the agenda just frankly to get some instruction from council. I know the city undertook some annexation at its beginning about ten months ago, in terms of a, a rough fall, I think, in eight, March or April of this year. I have, several reps have spoken to me and asked me to undertake, start the legal procedures necessary to annex land and, and I was very clear with those reps that I said, you know, before we do that, before I spend the city's money on, on legal fees to go out and do some of this late work, I wanted to make sure that I was getting that instruction from city council as a whole to do that. There's, there's a related item on the executive session agenda for the regular meeting, and some of this might, might be better said as for executive session, but in general, what I'm, what I'm looking for is one, does the council wish to proceed with annexation of land at this time? And really, I guess what I'm saying is, not that it would be annexing tomorrow, the legal procedures to do that are fairly complex. And so if you offer, if you tell me yes, and you say yes, the attorneys are authorized to do some late work, we start on the late work. And it would probably be, I'd say it'd be thirty days before I could come back to you and say, look, here's a coherent plan with your options and a title. And then number two, we do have a fairly, a fairly stark choice to make about whether you want to proceed to annex with an annexation plan, which the city doesn't have right now. And that, that gives you, that's sort of a long-term plan and it gives you some more options. I think I can talk to you in more detail about that. Or if you wanted to choose what is the statutory exception to that, which it lets you annex certain land when you don't have an annexation plan, the statutes contemplate it, but under some circumstances, the municipality won't have a plan. And if you do that, you can still annex land, but you're limited. And one of those limits that I think the city encountered last time was the one hundred parcels, and they can't be residents, it's that kind of thing. You've got those two choices and so I think you already do have municipal, I don't know if you've done a municipal service in, municipal service inventory, I think you do, the city does have a municipal service plan?
Yes.
Okay. Both of those are prerequisites to, to annexation, both of those are definitely prerequisites to developing an annexation plan properly. But that's, that's, that's the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. What I'm really looking for is construction with the city council, is, one, does the city wish to proceed with annexation at some point in the foreseeable future? Two, do we have your authority to spend some, some legal fee dollars and do the late work to, to develop the options for you, come back and present to you a plan with the options and hopefully some, some costs, costs associated with, with the two options that I'm talking about.
Why don't you go ahead and just discuss all that and executive, and the other's already there. You can go ahead and.
I think, I think you can, you can, so long as it relates to the potential, yeah, short answer is you can't. There, there's one trigger that you have to get to, but I think you've got it.
I'm motion to go.
Do we have, do we have anything with a specific agenda, item? Do we take any action now? So do you have a motion?
Not, not yet.
All right, so motion, [inaudible 00:11:55]?
I second. Uh.
It's motion, it's, it's.
Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauling. And Gloria Rodriguez.
Yes.